Good evening, everyone. I'll call the September 11th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. Tonight, we have Pastor Colleen Montgomery from Holy Trinity Lutheran Church to do our invitation. Would you please come forward, and I ask everyone to please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Loving God in the communion of Christ, we are all joined to one another. We pray first this night for all of those who died on September 11th, 2001, civilians and the firefighters, police, and first responders. Comfort those for whom this day is difficult, protect those who guard and serve us still, and turn all of our hearts towards your peace. We also pray for those who will be in the path of Hurricane Florence. Protect those in her path. Open pathways for evacuations. Help loved ones to stay together and reach places of safety. Provide assistance to those who need help. Finally, we lift before you all who govern with County. May those who hold power understand that it is a trust from you to be used for the service of other people. Grant in your mercy just and honest governance so that all people in the county might know your abundance. Give us grace to live together in unity and peace through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. We'll move right on into our agenda. And tonight, we have a presentation of a retirement resolution for Mr. Michael Edmonds. Would you come forward, please? I'll get you to stand right up here in between both of us.
I think it's referred to as a rose between two thorns. Before I get started, I gave several suggestions. They wouldn't add anything. With County Resolution 2018-31, a resolution honoring Michael K. Edmonds. Whereas Michael K. Edmonds was hired as a full-time deputy for the With County Sheriff's Office in January 1982. And whereas Edmonds transferred to the New River Valley Regional Jail from April 1999 to December 1999. And whereas Edmonds became an investigator with the With County Sheriff's Office in December 1999. And whereas, (cough) excuse me. Whereas having made over 200 arrests in one single year, Edmonds was presented the 2002 Investigations Division Award for Drug Enforcement. And whereas Edmonds was instrumental in the 2005 arrest of a subject wanted for murder in Tennessee. And whereas in October 2005, Edmonds was transferred to the Civil Division of the With County Sheriff's Office, serving countless court papers, service calls, and transports. And whereas Edmonds was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant in January 2016. And whereas on June 30th, 2018, Edmonds officially retired from the With County Sheriff's Office. Now, therefore be it resolved, the With County Board of Supervisors, assembled in regular session in Withfield, Virginia, this 11th day of September 2018, does hereby express its sincere appreciation to Michael Edmonds for his 36 years of dedicated law enforcement service and conveys its best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health for years to come. And be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors does hereby direct that this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of this board and that a framed copy be given to Michael K. Edmonds as a token of their high regard. Thank you.
We have one item to do before to make it official. To have a motion to adopt the resolution.
I make that motion, sir.
To have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Michael? And another, we want to give you this gift. It's a watch for your appreciation of your time of service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now you speak.
I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for this honor. I want to thank the four sheriffs that I've served under over these years. Wayne Pike, Kermit Osborne, Doug King, and Keith Donegan. Without them, I wouldn't have been able to do this for 36 years. It was an honor serving this county. Especially honored, and I do appreciate the work the Board has done for allowing me to continue to serve this county as a school resource officer. At Royal Treeline Elementary School. Brian spoke the truth. When he said building positive relationships with these kids is very important. And I'm happy to be there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Edmond.
Oh, we got to post your picture. I will tell you that we usually put their names. Tim, we got to get them. We usually put their whole names in the resolution, but as Chairman Reeves will tell you, when you get in law enforcement corrections, you lose your first name. So you go by your last name or nickname, and they wouldn't let me put Moose in there.
Okay, moving on with our agenda. We have a public hearing scheduled next, and I'll read the notice of the public hearing. Excuse me. In compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendment thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance entitled With County Noise Ordinance. Their proposed ordinance will replace ordinance 2017-2. The public hearing will be held Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South 6th Street, Withfield, Virginia, at which time the Board will hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed ordinance. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file for public viewing in the With County Administration's office located at 340 South 6th Street, Withfield, Virginia, or online at www.withco.org. I will now open the meeting for, open the public hearing, and I will ask Mr. Brier to go over the changes from our last ordinance to this ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance adopted June 30th, 2017. There are a few differences on the ordinance that is proposed. First of all, in the prohibited conduct section, this ordinance, as proposed, establishes a timeframe for the prohibited conduct to be between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Previously, there were only certain items that that was addressed in the ordinance. This made it clearly defined that it was between the hours 11:00 AM and 6, or 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Item 4, and the section to create plainly audible noises in residential areas in connection with lawn leaf care removal, gardening, tree maintenance removal, other landscaping, lawn, or timbering activities. That was in the previous ordinance. The next section was added, and that is the unnecessary discharging of firearms. And then, under Section B, all of those exemptions are new. No provisions of this chapter shall apply to the emissions of sounds for the purpose of alerting persons to the existence of an emergency or the emissions of sound in the performance of emergency work. No provisions of this chapter shall apply to the emissions of sounds associated with agricultural activities. And no provisions of this chapter shall apply to the emissions of sounds with or in conjunction with industrial operations. Item C is also a new addition, and that is the report of violation. Any person agreed by the prohibited conduct on Section 2A above, which is not exempt by Section 2B, may report the violation of this ordinance to the With County Sheriff's Office or Consolidated Dispatch Center. The person agreed in reporting a violation shall give his or her name and contact information. That constitutes the revisions from the current 2007-2 ordinance. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brier. And now I'm going to open the public comment period. You'll have five minutes speaking as an individual, and 10 minutes if you're speaking for a group. The Board has received two letters. I hope you've had a chance to read them. If not, they're in your mailbox. Ms. Lawson? I think we have one person that signed up.
Yeah, this evening, we only had one person. It's Mr. Gary Slump.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? I've had to call the Sheriff's Department multiple times about a dog noise. And I think the way the ordinance reads, if the dog barks once a minute for 10 minutes. And I just wondered if you guys had looked about changing that in any way.
We haven't looked at changing that. I don't think it'd come up. The Personnel Committee reviewed this, and this is a recommendation from the Personnel Committee. And I'll refer to, who's the chairman of the Personnel Committee? Mr. Lester?
That part didn't come up.
Okay.
We hadn't had any complaints about that section.
Okay.
So what exactly are you interested in seeing in it?
Well, pretty much, I think my problem's like 99% taken care of. So I don't know what the deputies did, but I sincerely appreciate it.
Well, that's not being taken out. Am I reading this right, Mr. Brier?
There is no changes in that, but it's correct.
The 10 minutes is still in there.
Okay, but I mean, I don't know what they did, but it's been taken care of anyway.
Okay.
Like, you know, so, you know.
Was it during the day or at night?
Night.
At night?
Yes.
The only changes would be that this would just be in effect from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Yeah, it always happened after 11:00 anyway. 11, 3, 4, 5, you know.
I mean, that's when we get most our complaints, at night.
Okay, where do you live? In Carterville Heights subdivision. But, so, I guess that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. That was the only person that signed up to speak on behalf of the noise ordinance. Does anybody else would like to address the Board concerning the noise ordinance? Here none, I'll close the public hearing on the noise ordinance. We'll consider the comment from the public hearing and have it back on the agenda for a vote at our next scheduled meeting. Next item is citizens' time. We have nobody signed up, but anybody would like to speak during citizens' time? Here none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve.
I make that motion.
To have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to pay the invoices. Any invoice, any board member would like to question or remove? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vault?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting, August 28th and September 4th, 2018. Entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
To have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any corrections or changes need to be made to the minutes. Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
Aye.
Over there.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. You were present on September, was you present on September 4th?
Yep.
Okay. Next item is old business. Mr. Brier, we have anything on our old business?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any agenda items on our old business this evening.
Okay. Next item is new business. Building and grounds committee?
Yes, sir. Building and grounds committee met on the 4th. We had to follow five recommendations. Do you want to deal with them one at a time?
Yes, sir.
Approved setting in public hearing for consideration of selling Circles County property. Item one.
Okay. This is a recommendation from the committee. It doesn't need a second. What date, Mr. Brier, or the Board will set for?
The earliest I would recommend setting this would be for the October 9th meeting.
Okay.
That would give us time to advertise this. If I might elaborate, Mr. Chairman, on page 53 of your agenda, it does list parcels and areas that we will be advertising for the disposal of property.
Just what are these parcels? How big are they?
The parcel 75255F is a very small water department, old water department parcel that's in the middle of the Austinville Limestone property up off of Newtown Church Road. It's a tank and a building that's located there. Probably less than a quarter acre off the top of my head on it. The parcel 6349 is the fire department building and property down at the intersection of Castleton and Wiser Highway. The lot's on parcel 4326 on Chapman Road. That is our 56 acres that we own adjoining the Apex Center that we are marketing parcels on that with construction of a new road. So we are advertising that area for general purposes. And then, the other is the Parcels in Progress Park, and that's just a general public hearing for the selling of parcels out there as well.
Does anyone have any problem with October the 9th? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing is set for October the 9th at 7:05.
Moving on. Item 2, approval to purchase an additional compactor with two boxes at a projected cost of $40,000 and to amend and appropriate the same. These boxes will be located at Royal Treat Trash Collection Center. And that's based on evidence of demand. We need that extra capacity.
Okay, again, come from committee. It doesn't need a second. Do you want to elaborate on more than that?
Well, generally, it's an item that we've had in the capital improvements plan. We talked about it a bit in next year's budget. The volume and the usage at the Royal Treat Center is such that Mr. Bowers recommended that I should go ahead and be taking on that. I know that Mr. Vault's been very aware of concerns up there of an additional volume.
We've had several complaints about the bins being full. Okay, again, come from committee. It doesn't need a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vault?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I start to say yes. I'm sorry. I got excited.
Next item.
Adoption, item 3, adoption of Appendix F of United States Building Code, making radon mitigation mandatory for all new construction. That's commercial and residential. And a minimum fee for any radon mitigation.
Okay, again, come from committee. It doesn't need a second. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sparker to come up and give us a little background and information on this.
Mr. Chairman, Board? It's a, well, I'll just tell a little story if you don't mind. 2000, about 1990, I built my house and put it in a basement, no windows, one door. About 2004, I learned of a gas that pulls from the ground from decaying uranium called radon. When I found out that we live in the, as the state would call it, the EPA says that we live with counties in a high zone for radiation, radon. Every time I go in my basement, I open my doors, first thing I do, and I kind of hold my breath as I go through it to get to that door, to air it out. But it's odorless. You can't see it. And next to smoking, it's the next biggest cause of lung cancer. So, but just thinking about that for a few moments made me realize that there's folks that call in with problems with their homes. And I think that at some point, we should, a lot of people don't know about radon. And what you don't know, I guess, can kill you at some point. So I'm just offering up, we don't have to. There's nothing that says that we can, when we install radon mitigation, that it takes the problem away. It may only solve half the problem. But that's a 50% chance better than what we had. And as far as new construction, there's things we can do to remediate the problem in older homes if need to. But there's a, I think that we should just adopt the appendix. It's not a highly costly thing to do. I think, you know, over a lifetime, it'd be worth it. If you pass it on to the next generation, it'd definitely be worth it. But the cost can be anywhere from $50 to $300. It all depends on the design of the structure and how big it is and, of course, how you trap the radon. I don't know what else to say about it, but if I'm open to any questions.
I'd like to make certain, just for clarification. You talked about old houses and everything else. But the proposal of adopting Appendix F is only applying to new construction.
Yes, sir.
So, and this would be any new building permit for residential construction would have to install this radon mitigation, which an estimated cost of $50 to $300.
Yes, sir. It'd just be, when you purchase your building permit, we ensure that the radon mitigation is installed, just like HVAC, electrical, everything else.
Mr. Sparker, exactly what is the radon mitigation? I mean, is it a filter?
Good question. Thank you, sir. We practically have it beat already in our typical construction. Radon comes up from the ground, so if you put in your first floor, let's say it's a slab of concrete. We always, the code says we'll put down four inches of stone, minimum, anyway. And that's what radon mitigation costs for. We'll put a vapor barrier down. And we do that already, so there's no added cost there. Added cost would be a piece of pipe, three inch at least PVC, that goes down into that stone and through the house, through the attic, and out the roof. It causes a, it works like a chimney. It pulls the radon through the stone out the top of the house. Now, in the event that concrete cracks or where your masonry goes, or your slab goes against your masonry, you want to caulk and seal those cracks that radon may come up through. But it's like electricity. You're giving it a path to go when you ground something.
If, using your house, for example, if somebody discovers an older house, they've got a problem with radon. What would it cost to put that mitigation system in a house that's already built?
I have to use the universal word, "it depends."
Well, I mean, but it'd be safe to say that it's going to be a lot more than $50 to $300?
Depends.
Depends.
It may not. It may only cost $50. Some of the, what I'm seeing nowadays is folks, their crawl space. If you have a vented crawl space, well, that radon has a place to go. It's getting vented out. But folks nowadays are trying to beat energy costs. So they'll go in there and they'll seal up around a crawl space to keep the air from coming in or going out. And they're trapping the radon, provided they have radon.
Well, just putting a vent pipe from the basement up through into there outside, do the same thing?
Yes, sir.
In an old dwelling?
Yes, sir.
If anybody have any more questions for me?
Who would tell us what's needed? You?
No, sir. Appendix F tells us how to.
In new construction only.
Yes, sir. In new construction only.
May I interject?
Ask, sir. Yes.
For cost-wise, it's no more than putting a roof drain, a floor drain in.
Right.
About the same cost. You wouldn't put a basement in and not put a floor drain in unless you're totally stupid. But it costs about the same amount. A piece of perforated pipe and vent it. Now, this is not something new. It's been around forever. And the technology and the science is what 20 years we've known that some people are being exposed at a higher rate than others. And with our car soil and the movement we have with the soil and the stone here, Tim and I have talked about it. You can have radon today and not have it tomorrow. Or you may be clear today, and it will occur a week later. It's not there constant. But your exposure is not good for you. And putting this in at a very, I endorse the idea totally. It's something that we should be doing. It's building science. We know there's a problem. We know what a very cost-effective cure is, so why would we ignore it?
For your own safety.
Martha, would you flip to page 61 there?
There's an illustration. And I think there's like four illustrations. There's different ways you could do this. If you have a, you know, some houses have a leaky basement, and they actually show you how to, when you put a sump pump in, you can protect yourself from radon coming up through your sump.
Are there several other counties that's adopted this?
No, sir. Not very. Blacksburg, Rockbridge County, our surrounding neighbors have not.
Amelia, Buckingham, Rockbridge, and Shenandoah have done it. Blacksburg, Buena Vista, Christiansburg, Lexington, Radford, Roanoke, and Salem cities have adopted.
You know, and it's strange. Carroll County, even in the high level.
Different stone over there. They're granite.
Another way to look at it, too, is put it in now because it'll be cheaper than trying to put it in later, most of the time. Spiller School, for instance.
I had a family member that had to go back and put it in. And I don't know the cost, Mr. Vault, but it was pretty much the same thing, just running the thing up through the ceiling. But they had to put in the fan system in order to pull the air, to pull it out. And that's an, you know, additional item if it's needed in those areas. But after becoming aware of it, if you drive around, you'll notice on a couple houses, on the outside of the houses, you'll see a pipe running up in the exhaust blower down near the bottom of it, just up the street here. I believe the dentist's office looked like they installed one of those some time ago, right up here.
That's the, that's the reason why you see it running through the attic. In the event that you would need to, let's say the chimney effect wasn't enough, then you can install a fan within the attic, and it'll pull it.
The nitrogen system, that's something to do with radon.
Spiller?
Spiller, they came back in and put some vents, fan systems in at Spiller. I don't know about the others, but I did hear Spiller they did. But to answer your question, Mr. Roberts, that's, it's basically, they would just be installing the pipes per that design. It wouldn't be a changing system, whatever it was. It's, it would just be like the other items. It'd just be a building inspection item he'd be checking off.
I like that idea.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Sparker? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny.
Aye.
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 On the chair vote, aye.
Item four, approval to set a public hearing for consideration of proposed amendment to the West County Manufacturing Home Ordinance.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Burr, you wanna explain what this is?
Yes, the, uh, within the manufactured home ordinance, uh, there is a section regarding RV campgrounds, um, that basically says that a special use permit is required. A recent campground underwent an expansion, uh, and it was just requested for clarity that the ordinance, uh, be updated to indicate that an expansion to an existing campground or park will require a new special use permit. So that way, someone doesn't come in, get a special use permit for ten, and then go with the twenty or thirty or whatever, without the board having input in it. So all this, all this does is just amend it to add that an expansion to an existing campground or park will require a new special use permit.
Okay.
Clarification. You didn't say this is for the expansion only, and that's what we agreed on. You're not gonna go back and deal with the part that's already there.
Right.
For the expansion part.
Yes.
Clarification, thank you.
Okay, come from mi- committee, it doesn't need a second, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. Chairman, wait, uh, this is just to set a public hearing, not to adopt it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but we already got two public hearings on October eleventh. I don't expect a lot of people to come out, but we can, there's no urgency on this one, we could set this for the November, uh, fourteenth meeting, if you would like, or we could set it for October eleventh. I mean, October ninth, I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, does any board member have any preference of the ninth, or the twelve, or the fourteenth?
Let's get them over with on the ninth.
Yes.
Don't take that.
Do it on the ninth.
Okay. All in favor, set in a public hearing on the ninth of October, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So set.
Final one is, uh, approval to issue notice of intent for abandonment of Buckley Drive.
Okay, come, uh, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, you wanna discuss this, Mr. Burr?
Yes, um, there's a map, I believe, in your package, I'm trying to get the right page of it here.
It's on page seventy.
Buckley Drive was a, um, is a state-maintained road. It was a road that existed, uh, prior to the construction of the interstate through the area. Uh, with the construction of the interstate, Buckley Drive still stays there and it dead ends up near the interstate right of way. The landowner that owns, there's two landowners that are joining this property. One landowner owns all the property to the east. Um, she also owns a portion of the property to the west, and another landowner owns the remaining portion of the property. Uh, Ms. Wilson has, uh, come forward and made a request, uh, for consideration of abandonment of this road, um, by VDOT. The VDOT road maintenance sign actually says in-state maintenance, maybe less than a hundred yards in on the road. Uh, that's 'cause it's always had a late got locked gate there, and they couldn't get any farther, and that's where they put the end-of-state maintenance sign. But, um, the, uh, the VDOT does have regulations, as you go through and doing this. The first item would be to publish a notice of intent to hold a public hearing. If no one expresses an interest for you all to hold a public hearing, then you all can proceed with abandonment of the road. If someone does express intent for a public hearing, we will then schedule a public hearing and go from there, uh, on consideration of abandoning that road.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horny.
Aye.
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 On the chair vote, aye. Set off from the Building and Grounds Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, next time, the ninth District Development Financing, Mr. Burr.
Mr. Chairman, they sent a, a letter to us earlier this year, um, to, uh, for the re- the appointment. Currently, Ms. Jennifer Atwell from the Chamber of Commerce serves, um, on this, uh, board, and, uh, she is more than willing to be reappointed to, uh, uh, serve on this board. Um, just, uh, wanna go ahead and place it before you, and see if you wanna go ahead and, uh, appoint Jennifer Atwell, um, for another term on this board.
Entertain a motion to, uh, reappoint Ms. Atwell, or reappoint somebody else.
Make a motion to reappoint her.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? She is reappointed. Next time is closed meeting, but unless our county attorney, uh, feels that we need to have a closed session, at this time, we'll cancel the closed meeting. Uh, Mr. Burr, you have something else?
You, there was one more item on the new business before we went to that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed it, Apex Committee.
Basically, just, uh, Mr. Vaughn is, is here with us, uh, just wanna make certain we went through, basically, a status report of where we are on the Apex Center. Uh, I put a memo in there, as most of you are aware, the, uh, current final date for, uh, construction, barring any additional stretched-out weather days or anything else to it, is, is still looking at November eleventh. Uh, Mr. Vaughn is working on many of the additional items, non-construction items, uh, that go with it. Uh, Ms. Collins has been working on some furniture options as well, uh, recent items, you all have approved, sound and lightning systems. Uh, purchase orders are issued, and those things are coming in. There are several items out there, and, and just wanted to make certain all of you are aware. I put a copy of the budget status in here, uh, just for review. As of the end of August, the unencumbered funds out of the original budget is about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital funds in this year's budget, so that puts us at a, at eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, Mr. Vaughn has been having regular monthly meetings with the contractor. Uh, they have now agreed to go to, uh, twice a month meetings, uh, more if necessary, but twice a month meetings every two weeks as we're getting down to the, the closeout of this project. We have spoken with him recently, one of the items that was originally removed from the contract to be added back in, or to, to be quoted to come back in, was the, uh, pay, the, it's not paving, it's surface treating of the road from Ready Mix Road down. Uh, spoke with the contractor today on that, they are working on getting those prices in. There's, um, obviously, now that sidewalks and all down, they'll be doing a lot of the final grading work around the site, putting a lot of the soil that's on the site down, they're working on their stormwater management ponds, and as they get those completed, they'll fill in one of the stormwater management ponds up top, and then they can start with all, any excess dirt they've got, moving that down, putting that into the road, building up the road. Obviously, we can't, uh, we can go ahead and look at getting some prices, but we can't proceed with, uh, building the road from the Apex Center down the hill to the other until we have all the dirt moved. And we don't wanna build it and have them running construction equipment across it, so that's gonna be some of the last items. Just, uh, just updating everyone on it, because I know everyone's been talking November eleventh, but there's some things. The building will be finished November eleventh, we'll have some parking areas finished November eleventh, the main handicap parking area should be finished, the main road coming into it, but there'll be additional work that the county will be doing on the lower parking area, and those areas in the process as we move forward. We've got some, um, probably some, um, paths to build, I won't call them sidewalk, but hard surface paths to build, coming up the hills. Uh, it appears that we may get some steps donated to us, that, uh, Mr. Hale and some others are working on, that, uh, we'll put some concrete on the, on the hillside and have some steps coming up from the lower level areas there. So, just wanted to give everyone a status of where we stand. Uh, there's several contracts, Mr. Vaughn, Vaughn and I have been discussing those. Several bid items that are out there, closing out on some bid items to come forward. And there, there will have to be some decisions made on some of the additional items that the authority is, is desiring or wanting as well as we finalize where our budget is. Mr. Stowers is working on the grant applications. Uh, we've got the grant application for a barn, um, multi-purpose barn facility, uh, to go into the Tobacco Commission, and, uh, we're still waiting for, uh, the opening of the Economic Development, uh, Southwest Virginia Economic Development Committee funds for that. So, there's no action items from the board tonight. We do need to finalize pretty quickly on the furniture. It, it appears going through some, um, competitive or cooperative procurement is probably gonna be our best opportunity to go ahead and move with this furniture and get it in. We'll be having a, uh, Apex Construction Meeting this week, and look at some of those items and get recommendations to come to the board and move forward with those.
Question on the surface treat, Mr. Vaughn. When he was talking about the surface road, that did include the handicap parking lot?
We have two proposals.
The handicap parking lot, we have already approved there, and it's in the contract for them to surface treat it, it's there already.
Right, so that's gonna happen.
That's gonna happen.
So, this surface treatment of the road is from Ready Mix Road down to Station eleven plus fifty at that entrance.
Yes, sir.
So, really, this other work can be done without interfering with that road if we get to the place. They can haul that dirt down there without getting on that road.
Yes.
Except for that last fifty feet where you cross the color, they'll have to be able to make that turn to go down the hill, but they can get right up to it and then complete most of the dirt. Yes, they can start at the Ready Mix Road end and work their way.
Yeah, we're not gonna get to a point that there's not a surface road down there. It might not have the last fifty feet of it, but it'll be open, the parking lot will be open.
The reason for that is because you can, first entrance accesses the handicap parking lot, you can always go in there.
Right, but my point here is, people like to hear the bad stuff, and I wanted to make sure we include the bad stuff. The, the road will be surfaced, and the parking lot will be done. One, one last question, on the lightning arrestor system, did we leave a section of sidewalk out to where we can get that ground field in, or did they pour all of the sidewalk?
Sidewalks in, most of them, all on the north side, two-thirds on the north, the south side. We haven't done sidewalk on the west side yet.
Well, have you had any feedback of where that grounding field's got to go?
No, I don't think it's actually a real field, it's not, it's not that large, it's not like a big mansion, so I think they're gonna be okay in the quote flowerbed area.
You can get multiple rods in there.
Right.
Okay.
So we still have five-foot of space between sidewalk and the building.
Okay.
And there's one area that's designed without a sidewalk that we are recommending, and we'll have on a committee, to go ahead and do a change order to complete that sidewalk across there. Makes no sense as to why they didn't have that sidewalk all the way around the building.
There's always a need for addition, isn't there?
Yep.
Bill, is RGM doing any thing to prepare for this rainstorm we may be getting?
Yeah, and I think they're gonna hit it real hard in the morning. I was out there with, uh, Bob and Larry this afternoon, pointing out stuff, and the kids are going north and south, and that's what they got to do. So I expect them to be out there in the morning, wrapping stuff up.
That's worrisome. Three or four inches is bad, but if we get a lot of rain, that's, we'll be finding out the, how well all the stormwater management systems work.
Stephen, on the sign, I remember there was a discussion, uh, about getting some money for, for a sign. I don't remember what the funding source was.
That was one of the items that was being applied to for the Southwest Economic Development Division of the Tobacco Commission, and their grant oper- their grant cycle, they postponed this spring to later this fall, and they still haven't opened it up. But that's what we were planning, and it is, they, the, that grant typically is a fifty-fifty match for it.
Yeah, dollar for dollar.
Yep, dollar for dollar.
But, well, didn't they, uh, well, which I know why they postponed that, 'cause I think they're trying to get this new thing implemented where they can collect, uh, revenue from the site for so much, for so many years.
What Tim's talking about, the Tobacco Commission, typically, we've had a project come in, we apply to them for Scott Farthing Incorporated to build their building and, and hire forty people, or whatever it is, and we get a grant from the Tobacco Commission of two hundred thousand dollars, and we typically match that grant in whatever manner we need to. The Tobacco Commission, or it may not even be unmatched, the Tobacco Commission is now updating their regulations, it's hasn't finalized yet, but they wanted to revise their regulations that they gave you two hundred thousand dollars, but in return, you gave them five percent of the tax return on that property. And originally, it was five percent in perpetuity, so it didn't matter if you got two hundred thousand dollars back and you paid them a million dollars back, or whatever it was, or, it's now come back to a hundred and five percent of the grant amount. So, they gave you two hundred thousand, you're gonna pay the taxes back to them, uh, over the years, until you hit a lump sum of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's currently where that is.
Keeping themselves a job.
Well, I guess my concern is, I mean, what's our priorities on these additional, you know, what you have listed as additional items? Some of them are, you know, a, a want list, but, you know, I s- is there a priority list? I mean, I, I certainly think a sign should be the top of the list, and based on my iPhone math, we're looking at seven hundred and ninety-three some odd thousand dollars difference between how much money we've got budgeted in, in the total with the, with additional items, want list, whatever you wanna call. I mean, do we have a priority of, of what we're gonna spend the money on first?
It's part of why I'm making sure everybody keeps aware of this, and you all are gonna have to be establishing that priority. Fencing is a high priority for the authority that they brought up. They say especially with the cattle shows and horse shows or things that come in, you wanna make certain that you at least have a fence where if anything gets you loose, they don't run down to Chapman Road or out to the interstate area, has a risk there, so that, that is an item that's in there. The sign is one of those, and, and the sign cost can run from probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to a million dollars, depending on LEDs and all of those things in the process. I think you gotta start with a larger design for what you ultimately get to, but start out with just the, the initial sign up there, and determine how much of a impulse buy it is for someone to grab by and see the events going on, and how much it would be, you know, attracting business to the area. Ideally, with sponsorship money, and that, that comes, that's not in play in here, but if you get sponsorship money from somebody that says, "I'll sponsor a sign up there as long as you name it the A B C," you know, sign is still the Apex Center, but you have their sponsorship label, logo on it, then that, you know, obviously puts additional money towards this project.
Well, not to be a pessimist, but I, I've yet seen sponsorship money that I've heard about for several years.
I understand, I, I do think there is.
There's sponsorship money involved.
Okay.
Now, one question about construction, we, we sort of slid by, what's the status of Ready Mix Road, can you give us a note?
I, I was gonna do that next, thank you, Mr. Hale. Uh, Ready Mix Road, Mr. Vaughn and I met last week, I guess it was week before last, we met with VDOT out there on-site, looked at the, the drainage, he's meeting with them Monday, um, on approval of the design of the, um, curb and gutter that we have to put in down there, and the drainage pipe, and get their approval on it, and then we can proceed with getting some, uh, cost proposals and putting that in.
Hopefully, their criteria don't change by Monday.
Correct. We hope not.
Mr. Vaughn, I had a quick question. This comes up in Planning Commission just about every month, but where are we at with cleaning up the area so you can see it better from the road? The trees, bushes? I believe the state has...
I'll comment two things. VDOT did do about, did an excellent job, and I've already sent a thank you to them on that. They went up probably about as high as they could up on their right-of-way, doing a lot of cleaning down there. Last week, the buildings, this week, this week, last week, this week, the Buildings and Grounds Department was out on-site and have bush hogged a much wider path all the way up Ready Mix Road. They are going to come back with the chainsaws down near the Happy Store, Circle K Store down there. There's some trees that are in the right-of-way there that they're going to have to just cut and chip those and get those out of the way, but that will widen it out. And they bush hogged basically the entire left side up to the site up through there to make it more attractive. And that's the goal of doing that now. As you're getting closer to opening, you've got that up, up through there. Obviously, once we get the road taken over by the state, that will help out as well. The, there are some additional trees that we are looking at cutting out on the, on our 56-acre property, just to remove them out of the line of sight for the traffic coming from the interstate that are seen. The trees between the soccer fields, multi-purpose fields, and the right-of-way down there, we're getting proposals on what it would take to move all, to have all those cut out, and then that would be an item to come back here and decide, do we cut those up? That is a large area between the top of that hill and Chapman Road down there, and it's going to be very expensive to continue to maintain and mow if...
And we don't own that property.
A lot of that is VDOT property as it is. And it's going to be difficult to keep that. I mean, I'm more interested in keeping Ready Mix Road and the entrance up there and all of that neat and clean as much as we can.
I think if we periodically, if we, if we get the trees cut down, I mean, you ain't going, you're not going to have to do something every year. Every five years or every 10 years, you might go in there and maybe clear some out, or by that time, it's known and you don't, you know, have to do that much. But, the more you cut down, you know, I've seen more VDOT had done, you know, as high as they could get up probably. But, I know with a skid steer and a front bush hog can go up, I've seen go a lot steeper places than that with them.
Well, the fence is going to take care of some of that. When we put the fence back on the property line down Chapman Road as far as we're going to go, that's going to create some clearing to get the fence in, because obviously, we're going to put the fence on the property line, aren't we?
That's our goal, as much as we possibly can. If a property line comes down the hill a little bit, it doesn't make any sense to really put it down there. It's better to come...
So, you maintain.
...the top of the hill. And long-term, it's one of those items as well for, as the authority gets equipment, and one of the pieces of equipment may be a skid steer with a bush hog type thing, they may have the equipment to be able to do a lot more work on that hillside with their regular mowing and maintenance out there.
Anything else?
The last item on Ready Mix Road, VDOT has sent us the invoice for our half of the revenue sharing of Ready Mix Road, so...
I've seen that.
That's good to go and approved and out there, so we have that ready for them to start taking the road over. And we have placed no parking signs. The first one didn't make it 24 hours, but we did place no parking signs out there. We're moving some of the no parking signs to some other areas, and we'll request law enforcement to help us to try to encourage those that are parking along that right-of-way to move on. Oh, one more item on that. I'm sorry, Mr. Bear, go right ahead.
I have a suggestion on that. I saw those signs while they were still on. That day that those parking signs went up, that night, two tractor trailers parked in the road. Now, they weren't parked on the side where the signs were, but they were parked on the pavement in line. Think about, talk to Mr. Bauer about whoever put them up. Those concrete blocks that we can get, those 800-pound blocks that you can buy for $60, set one of those out there with that parking sign, and let them back over that. Then Coy gets the job to call and pull the trailer off of that block, but that little thin post don't have a chance against the SEC bumper backing over. But, they were sitting ducks, the way it worked.
And Mr. Vaughn's project with putting the curb there at the Burger King site down through there will help define part of that area and take away that sort of wide parking area as it is.
Can we also do some kind of landscaping to put the dirt back in that and something there to see what's not up?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be built back up when it's finished up there. We know where we get the dirt.
We got dirt.
To kind of follow up on what Mr. Hale said, it's probably a question for Mr. Farthing. Is there any way that the county can adopt a no parking ordinance? Because right now, the fines like $30. And, you know, I know the sheriff's office has written hundreds down by Gatorade, and you can go down there tomorrow and find one. Now, the town of Withfield done their town ordinance, and they've started issuing fines to these, the big trucks up at Walmart and Lowe's, and word is spreading. You hit them with a $100, $150 fine, word spreads quick. $30 is a gamble.
That's a good one for them to look into.
I agree. I think, I think we need to do that.
The last thing I was going to mention, unless you have a comment on that, sorry. Last thing I was going to mention, one of the goals that we've talked about with VDOT, we've actually put in our Smart Scale application, and we looked on that application, the full gauntlet of full signalization, which VDOT doesn't like full signalization. They say full signalization at exit 80 doesn't work well.
It doesn't work well.
But, we have talked about putting flashing red on Chapman Road and flashing yellow coming across. There's debate on coming out of Ready Mix Road whether that should be flashing yellow, which I would like to see it be, or flashing red. Still been a three-way there. They've got our Smart Scale application in on that. We're making some revisions, but in the meantime, they are looking at that as a safety item, and we are meeting them next week with VDOT, I think it's next week, VDOT and AEP. And if we can get AEP to put a pole there, they have an existing pole. They'll run the guy wire across there, and they'll have the flashing yellow lights and the flashing red lights up in a couple months. So...
Sounds like real progress.
So, that's, if we can work with AEP and get a pole in, we will, we will proceed with that. It's not going to be the fancy metal arms and the things hanging off of it, but it just needs to be some flashing lights to signalize which, so people know that they can continue across there and quit backing the traffic up.
And I'm the one that made up, come up with the argument that even though you put flashing, if you've got three flashing red and one flashing amber, the people coming off the interstate and across the bridge on Ready Mix Road, if somebody's sitting over there, they go and think, well, they got the red, they got the right-of-way too, and they're going to stop to see what that person's going to do. You know, it doesn't make sense if you're going to have a flashing light, have it flashing amber on Ready Mix Road and red on Chapman Road, and I think the traffic will move a whole lot better that way. What do y'all think back there?
That's a mess.
Spoken like a true VDOT engineer.
No one knows what to do anyway, so...
And, this is a Stephen Bear idea. This hadn't come from any committee or anything else. While we were just talking with VDOT, I've looked at this at other intersections, and some of y'all may have talked about it before, and I just don't recall it. We don't have funds for it right now, but I've asked them, what does it take for these localities that put lights up at their exits to lighten up the exit areas? Not just the lights all the way down the road, but a couple of them have sort of what I'll call the flying J light right there at the exit, because it makes it so much more attractive in the evenings, a lot more welcoming and inviting, and plus a lot safer because you can see where you're going right there. So, I've asked them, just, you know, give me a ballpark idea of what we're looking at there, what it takes to do lighting exit 80, exit 77, either one. I mean, it may be so outrageous, it's not in something we can look at, can do. But, I said, you know, y'all doing it in other areas. Just give me an idea of what, what that costs. But, I've got nothing else on the Apex Center unless you all have any questions.
We've put roundabout.
Well, that's what they wanted to put there.
Roundabout would take out a couple of businesses.
Yep.
It'd take, it'd take out more than a couple of businesses.
Okay. Is that all you have for the board tonight, Mr. Bear?
That is all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does any board member have anything to bring before the board at this time? Hear none, we will be adjourned. Thank y'all.